I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for April 14, 2020. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corey, you gonna call the roll?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
President De Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Trustee Franz, please unmute your phone.
I'm here.
Trustee Frye? Is your mic on? Yes.
Trustee Frye, please unmute your phone.
Here.
Trustee Pannacola?
Here.
Trustee Lomax and Trustee Perez are absent. That is five, we have a quorum.
At this time, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Are there any online public comments?
There is not.
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 24, 2020 Village Board meeting?
Do you have a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $527,641.54. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Do you have a motion?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pannacola?
Yes.
That's four of the motion carries.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda under administration ordinance of the Village of Benserville, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, supporting a state of emergency and approving executive orders protecting the public health, safety, and welfare, and providing financial and emotional relief to the residents and businesses, business community. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. On March 24, the Village President signed a declaration of a state of emergency for the Village of Benserville. Additionally, there are three subsequent executive orders that have gone along with that. This ordinance tonight supports that declaration as well as the executive orders.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Thank you.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pannacola?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Community and Economic Development Ordinance approving a preliminary and final plot of subdivision for York Wood re-subdivision at 201 South York Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Your Honor, this evening, Community Economic Development Director Scott Weiger is joining us via teleconference. Scott, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Evan. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the York and Wood Townhouse Development that's been under construction for longer than I'd like to say. It is finally nearing completion. One of the final things to do is review and approve a plot of subdivision which you have. It creates jack and parcels for each of the five townhomes and their associated garages, so that these can be taxed individually and sold. So, we found that the plot does meet the Village ordinance. The engineering has reviewed it. CED has reviewed it. On the 7th of April, the Community Economic, excuse me, Community Development Commission, pardon me, did recommend approval of five to nothing, and staff recommends it be approved as well.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pannacola?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance approving a preliminary and final plot of subdivision for Sexton Property re-subdivision at the northwest corner of Grand Avenue and County Line Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Weiger, we'll turn to you again.
I'll be very brief. This is, generically known as the Bo Jackson and Lee Sports Dome. This is north of the hotel campus on Grand Avenue. Creates two lots, one with the dome, and the eastern lot, two being the associated fields. They'll be taxed separately as part of the agreement. The plot you have before you does create those two lots, does create a whole slew of easements that are necessary to get the dome up and running. It does meet the standards in the subdivision control regulations. Engineering has signed off on it. Our staff and CED has signed off on it. Once again, the CDC recommended approval of five zero at their April 7 meeting, and staff recommends it be approved as well.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pannacola?
Yes.
That's four.
The motion carries and the ordinance is passed.
Your Honor, if I can intercede, can I, I would like to try to contact Trustee Perez. Corey?
I don't. They have to, it's a general line that we have to call in.
All right, it's not gonna work. All right, carry on. We're just gonna have to do it without him.
Under Finance, we're gonna have a, there will be a presentation on our financial situation. I believe Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to everybody. I hope you're safe and healthy as well as your families. Sorry, we're gonna bore you a little bit with finances here, but we want to give you an update on where we stand in terms of our reserves and some of the things that management is taking action on to try to predict and protect the village from potential losses of revenues. I'm sure you've heard many other villages are taking steps. Some are taking very quickly, some are taking more slowly. We want to give you a general idea of what the manager and the staff are currently doing along with the mayor here at the village. So, the first slide pretty much is just a slide showing you where our reserves stand coming into this year as it relates to our operating funds. We have two operating funds. The General Fund, which is our big one, and we have our Utility Fund, which is also, which is both an operating fund and a capital fund, but we'll talk about that a little later. The General Fund itself came into the year with $11.8 million of spendable reserves. That is not the full reserve. If you were to look at our audit, there's more money in there, but some things have to be reserved for specific purposes, either because the village put that in place through an ordinance or a contract holds it back, those types of things. This is actually the spendable portion of the reserve. The village has a reserve policy which requires us to have 25% of our expenditures on hand at any given time. Basically, coming into the year, we actually had 57% available of annual expenditures. So, I was on a call with other finance people not so long ago, and a lot of the villages, they range anywhere from being below 25% to being where we are, some are probably better. But I would say, on the whole, we are in a good position coming into possible loss of revenues if that should occur after the pandemic is over. On the Utility Fund side, we have about $8.5 million of reserves coming into the year. Again, the reserve policy is supposed to be 25% of expenses. This one has 336% of the required, or of our annual operating expenses. The difference between this fund and the General Fund is this one also has to accommodate capital. So, while it says 336, that doesn't mean that from an operations standpoint, we can continue to spend wildly. We still have to be careful and protect our reserves so that we can get some very important infrastructure in the ground, take care of repairs, replacement, and keep the water system from going defunct in one manner or another. Next slide, Corey. So, the breakdown basically on the General Fund side is we have the $20 million worth of revenue planned in our budget, and $12 million of that, or about 60%, is what we would consider at-risk revenues. At-risk revenues are those that we think are going to fluctuate significantly, either because we're going to see some kind of economic problem, or we see some kind of legislative problem coming along. Maybe the state won't send us as much money, and we'll get more into that later. But we have a 40% base, which is made up of more secure revenues, those that we consider more of a reliable source that may incur some reduction, but we don't expect it to incur real large reductions. So, a 60-40 split, not bad. I mean, obviously, we, if it was 40-60, it would be better, but it's something that we feel is manageable, and we can start to address real issues as we go forward.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second.
Trustee Perez, have you joined the call?
I am, I'm on the phone.
Thank you. Let the record show that Trustee Perez joined the call 6:40 PM.
Is McLean on the call? All right, guys, mute your phones, okay? Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Corey, so, the relatively stable revenues are mostly property taxes. You don't see huge fluctuations in property taxes, although we are predicting that we will see some. Management is addressing these types of revenues as we're potentially going to see a 10% loss. That may come from collection issues that are really cash flow issues more than the really loss of revenue, where more people will not be able to pay their property tax bills, so those payments will be delayed to us. But it also may come in the form of valuation decreases should there be large numbers of empty properties. We cannot necessarily predict how the county's gonna hold in terms of valuations. I know in 2008, where I was at, we saw large fluctuations down in valuations. I think in Illinois, it's pretty much better than that, but we're still kind of gonna isolate those revenues as if we're gonna lose about 10%. And we have a very small amount of grants that we continue to expect to come in, mostly on the PD side. The next one. Our at-risk revenues are the, most of the other taxes, fines, and fees that we charge. Sorry. Sales tax, obviously, if the economy takes a hit, is going to be highly volatile. Income tax, also, if people lose jobs, is gonna become volatile. But income tax, we're also worried about a possible sweep from the state if they should need to balance their budgets, where they're going to pull some of that money away from the localities and bring it back to the state. Hopefully, they won't do that, but they're doing a lot for these efforts as well, and we have to prepare ourselves for it. The hotel motel tax is kind of self-explanatory. Nobody's gonna be traveling probably for a while. That source is going to dry out. Our amusement tax is Edge-related. We know that Edges are gonna be closed at least a while. We're gonna do more research on Edge because it's a business-like establishment, and it doesn't quite work, loss of revenue, loss of expenses like the others, so we're kind of gonna analyze that separately. But we expect there to at least be, this year, potentially going into next year, a loss of amusement taxes. The red light fines, we're on the table at the state level to be outlawed, if you will. We don't know, that's kind of on hold now, but we don't know if they're gonna continue to pursue that. They may wait until next year, but in any case, we're considering it an at-risk revenue at this stage of the game. Other police fines, while we may be giving the same number of tickets out, we don't have the same number of people parking, so parking tickets will go down, and collection issues start to rise. Community development permits and fees, if, you know, there's a lack of interest in the market to establish new businesses or make changes to houses because people's incomes are down, there'll be lower permit fees as well. So, these are the ones that we consider at risk. Next one, Corey. So, on a sensitivity analysis, this kind of shows, this slide shows you kind of how much revenue we lose based on how much of the at-risk revenue we lose. So, the first line shows you, if we didn't lose anything, we'd get our 20 million point six of revenue in the door. If we lose 10% of the at-risk revenue, we're gonna lose 2.3 million. And again, 25%, we're gonna lose 3.7 million, 35%, 4.5, and 45%, 5.4. So, we have to react differently to the different levels of revenue that we're getting as they come in the door. The manager pretty much has expressed that right now, we're targeting the 35% range as a possibility. That doesn't mean it's actually going to happen, it just means from our planning perspective, we're gonna start looking at, what if we have to save 4.6 million going into next year's budget and thereafter, for a while?
I just wanna jump in there. I think it's an important point. We are planning for 35% loss, we are not predicting a 35% loss. So, we're gonna have a plan in place to make sure we can weather this storm. It doesn't necessarily mean I believe us to hit that level.
In response to that, some of the quick things that we've done already is, we've already found $1.1 million worth of savings. These are like the quick hit items that we could say, well, we can defer that, or we can bring that in-house, or we can stop that contract right now. A lot of it came from repairs and maintenance, non-essential training, and expenditures related to revenues. For instance, our economic incentives. We would expect that if the sales tax goes down, particularly in our auto industries where we have economic development agreements, incentives, that the expense side of that would also fall. So, a lot of these changes came from those items. So, when we look at the General Fund then, on the left-hand side, we're talking what the original budget looked like. On the right-hand side, our target level of a 35% loss is, that's how it's looking right now for 2020. So, on the left-hand side, you see, we kind of came in and still had about $3,000 worth of money we could add to the reserves. When we get into the 35% loss scenario and project our expenses less that 1.1 million we've already identified, we actually look like we're going to lose reserves or use reserves of $3.4 million. Now, that's just a picture today. Management is striving to bring that number down every day through all the actions it's taking, and it will continue to do that so that we can use less of our reserves going into 2021 and forward. On the utility side, we had originally planned in the budget $12.2 million worth of revenue. Utility revenue is pretty much considered a stable revenue source. People still need to use water, people still need to flush toilets. It's only going to see a fluctuation to the extent, again, that maybe we can't collect some of those monies from people who are, have financial problems in their homes. So, we have analyzed from an internal purpose, like we did the 35% for at-risk on the other side, we think that a reasonable level to plan to here is a 10% loss of revenue on the utility side. So, going forward, that 10% costs us about $1.2 million in the utility fund. Again, when we look at the utility fund, the original budget versus the 10% loss level that we're planning to right now, originally, we had revenues of $12 million, operating and debt expenditures, which, you know, are solid, have to continue, of $2.1 million. We then were going to have capital expenditures of $5.7 million, and we were actually gonna use $3.5 million reserves according to our budget in utility for 2020. On the 10% loss side, where you see, we lost the $1.2 million of revenue, so now we're at $11 million. We've applied some of those quick-hit expenditure cuts here as well, and we got an operating and debt expenditures of $9.6 million, and we're actually gonna, we're actually gonna have a net operating surplus of $1.4 million if we hit the 10% loss of revenue level. The note here is that $1.3 million is typically used for capital improvements. So, as we move onward, if we were to only use that 10%, or hit that 10% loss ratio, we would continue to have almost $1.4 million to spend in the utility fund going forward for repairs and maintenance and capital-type expenditures, or to absorb any operating expenditures that are unknown at this stage of the game. So, the utility fund, for all practical purposes going forward, is fairly stable as long as we don't need to make any very large capital improvements. We've reduced some of the capital expenditures, but most of them were contracted out or were required to be made.
Can we make sure that all the trustees have their phones muted? We're getting some feedback on the village's end. Check. Check one. All right, carry on.
Okay. So, it's $5.2 million worth of expenditures after we take out the ones that we think we can defer, and we're gonna use $3.8 million worth of the reserves if we have a 10% loss of revenue going into next year. So, this is kind of the overview of both the General Fund and the Utility Fund. Again, on the General Fund, we had about $11.8 million coming in. We're planning, if we plan for a 35% loss, that would be a $3.4 million use of our reserves, leaving us with $8.3 million. Now, the village has a policy that we retain 25% of expenditures. That 25% is the $4.9 million, and over and above that, what I'm referring to as the excess reserve is almost $3.4 million. So, we have $3.4 million before we even dig into the standard reserves that the village has established for safety going forward. On the utility fund side, we start with almost $8.5 million. We're gonna use $3.8 million, leaving $4.6, well, okay. And so, the reserve policy would call for us to reserve $2.4 million, so our excess reserve on that side is $2.2 million. So, when we're looking at the utility side, we need to remember, going forward, 2021, we'll have about $1.4 million coming in, even if we don't increase rates, plus we have $2.2 million to use over the course of several years in case we have any major projects that we have to take care of. So, moving forward, I think internally, we're bracing ourselves for definitely a three-year run at lower revenues, but we're looking for protection for more like four or five years at this stage of the game. So, internally, we've started to talk about, first, we're gonna use the target, the excess reserves, the ones that aren't part of our reserve policy. And what we'd like to do is bring our expenditure levels down through planning to a level where we have those for three years, and we're not digging into the official reserve of the village until after that point in time. So, that's our plan, to look at expenditures and reduce them to the point where we're gonna make $3.4 million less for the General Fund for three years after 2020, and the Utility Fund for the $2.2 million. Keep in mind, those are not gonna be the numbers we end up with, because we're gonna start reducing expenditures today, and for every expenditure we reduce today, we will have more excess reserves to use going forward. So, it's all kind of a game of, I don't know.
And this is still based on a 35% loss?
Yes. On the utility side, 10%, or 10% on utility, 35 on the other side. Can you go back, Corey? So, the second part of the plan is, we're going to watch our revenues very carefully, and we're gonna start to decide, is it going to 35% or is it going to 25%? And a lot of manage, while we will have a plan to deal with 35%, if we get closer to the 45% range, we start seeing that, then we will plan further to cut another 10%. If we get, maybe, if we're only seeing, oh, this is only being cut by 15%, we may react the other way, and some of those things on the plan won't be executed. So, what we plan on doing is to watch what's going on, not overreact, you know, not underreact, but not overreact either, where we're cutting services when there's really no need to do something like that. So, our expenses going forward will match what the real revenue piece is doing, except that this year, we're gonna get rid of as much as possible, because the earlier we get rid of it, the more benefit we get from it. In doing that, we're gonna balance things. We're gonna balance the services to the residents. The core services are not negotiable, those will continue to be funded. We will work with the mayor, the board, and everybody to determine if there's any that can be delayed, or deferred, or brought down to a level, but we want the services to the residents to continue as much as possible. We want staffing levels and employee retention to be a consideration. You have some good employees here who work hard for you. We want to keep that in mind as we're making cuts so that we don't all of a sudden have a loss of talent, or not enough people to do what we need them to do, or not the right people to do what they do. And we want to maintain security through future reserves, so we're going to make sure that we have money going forward at any given time so that we can survive another two, three years if this should drag itself out. On the capital side, things are a little different. On the capital side, we tend to have less revenue coming in every year, we tend to save up a lot, and then we do a lot of projects because we have very large projects. So, they pan out a little differently than the operating side. Our capital improvement fund is coming into the year with $5.4 million. The village reserve requires us to reserve 50% of annual revenues in that fund, and we have 274% of annual revenues in there at that, at the beginning of the year. Motor fuel tax has about $1.6 million. Again, we're supposed to reserve 50% of annual revenues, and we have $457.8. So, if we look at what's gonna happen to the capital funds over the course of 2020, there was a large amount of capital planned, capital-planned projects in 2020. We looked at the projects, I should say Public Works looked at the projects mostly, and determined which ones needed to move forward from the standpoint of, we've already committed by contract. It was an absolute, you know, safety issue. We have grant funding that we don't want to lose in our shares there, and a lot of these projects were already in the works. So, we will actually use $3.6 million of that $5.4 million on the CIP side in 2020, leaving us $1.7 million. The reserve policy requires us to keep $1.3 million. Again, I think we're kind of taking the same tact on the CIP side, although, you know, we'll work with, with the board and management to determine whether we can do that based on actual needs. But that's 1.3, and that leaves us with only a $408,000 reserve on the CIP side. Now, that CIP is... Now, that CIP is our street projects, it's our fleets, it's sidewalk projects. It's everything on the general fund side. But, we need to note that we also get repetitive annual revenues in the form of sales tax, the non-home rural sales tax of almost 2.7 million in every year going forward after this. So, we do have 2.7 million dollars to rely on to do some capital planning. However, a large portion of that is going to be committed to debt or taking care of TIF funds. So, right now, what we're looking at on the CIP side is, you know, this is where the true cost is. You know, if we have large reductions in revenue, we're going to have to take a very serious look at our infrastructure programs and decide which ones really have to go forward, and we're really going to have to work hard at looking for grants and other things, which may present themselves in this environment. Because, you know, I can see an infrastructure bill coming down one chute or another, and hopefully, they won't require as big a share as so that they can keep people working. So, that's kind of the avenue we're taking on the general CIP. In the meantime, our MFT funds have 1.6. We're only using 134 this year. We have to maintain 215 for our official reserve policy. So, we have 1.2 million there. That gives us a little bit of comfort level on the street side. It might even, you know, if the discussion goes that direction, help operations if we struggle on that side because it can be used for street-type operations too, to the best of my knowledge. Now, the repetitive revenues on that side, excuse me, obviously, we all know the gas price has lowered. People aren't driving. There may be a significant dip, but if it's at the 35% level, we'll get another 432,000 every year in to plan to something new. Again, moving forward on the capital funds, we're going to evaluate the need for essential projects, delay anything that we don't necessarily need to do, pursue all opportunities for grants that arise as we go forward. We're going to consider using the money to pay our debt service. So, we'll do projections on that, and the capital funds will continue to support the TIF funds that aren't quite making it at this stage of the game. And then we have questions.
So, I'll just do a couple, just real quick closing comments. The Village of Bensonville is in a much stronger position than many of our counterpart communities, and that is completely attributable to this board's conservative budgeting. That conservative budgeting that we've always adopted gives us significant budget flexibility. That's not saying this has got to be easy or painless. There will be pain felt, but I am optimistic that through staff's good deeds and looking through their budgets, they'll find smart cuts, and these cuts will be made with a scalpel rather than a hatchet. Our goal is to try to preserve services to residents. And in doing so, we're going to continue to be the safety net that residents need when they need us most. But, we're going to put on our conservative hats and be conservative with where that money's spent. So, if there's any questions from the board, we can take them. Otherwise, that concludes our report.
I know it's kind of hard for the board to wrap their hand and follow along with us being at home, but I got to say Evan and Julie have both been racking their brains ever since this happened. We've been there. I've been there every step of the way with them. It's not easy. It's not, the decisions that are being made are not easy, but I commend both of them.
Thank you. Yes, this budget is, this presentation is posted to Novus in the attachment section and was emailed to the board. Does the board have any questions?
I just, I have one quick question for Julie.
Yes, Nick.
I don't know if you heard anything, is there anything in the works possibly for, with the stimulus money from the government coming, you know, to help municipalities going forward, or is there anything that we can get from the state or federal government to help with costs like this, or no?
Right. So, there's two aspects there. One is the disaster funding. We'll get a significant portion of our COVID-19-related expenses reimbursed, 65% to 75% typically through FEMA. The stimulus side, only municipalities with a population of 500,000 or more will be directly getting any money. DuPage County does qualify as one of those communities. The county has not indicated how that money will be spent, however. The state's also going to get a lot of money, but the state hasn't indicated how they're going to spend that money. So, we're going to be there. We're going to fight for every dollar that's out there. We're scrappy like that, but there's no guarantees that money will flow through.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Julie, thank you once again.
Thank you.
We do not have a report for the police department under Public Works. There's a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois State Toll, Illinois State Toll Highway Authority for the construction of the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Contract I-17-4683. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Joe, is it?
Joe? Yep. Thank you very much. So, before you tonight is our fourth IGA with the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority related to the Elgin-O'Hare project, now commonly known as I-390, 490 Expressway. The village has entered into three different agreements in the past. These are all agreements that are mechanisms to identify responsibilities of each project. Much of the IGAs deals with construction issues, jurisdictional transfer issues, access issues, and utility during construction. One other component of the IGAs is funding. Financial responsibilities and obligations that are, that the village can pay for. These are referred to as our upgrades. Early in the project's planning, we made a determination, our previous boards and our previous administration made a determination on what we wanted our corridor to look like. And some of those included enhanced, excuse me, enhanced form liners for decorations along the sides of the bridges, black powder-coated fences, bike paths, things of that nature, things that are above the current standard of the tollway. So, this is another project that they're doing. This is the 4683 project. This is mainline tollway going from Route 83 to Thomas. On this project, we have identified seven upgrades that we'd like to take care of during this construction. Again, construction has already started on this project, so we're kind of getting a little late start on this, but we want to get through them. Most of them have to do with form line patterns along the sides of the bridges. We do have a Village of Bensonville form liner going in on the Supreme Drive Bridge. There's three sections of upgraded access control fencing, and we do have a shared-use path going under the Supreme Bridge. So, all of those are included in this IGA. The total amount of the upgrades is about $134,000 for this IGA in this project. There is some jurisdictional and maintenance responsibilities on Supreme Drive that are also outlined in the IGA. So, as we continue to work with the tollway on these projects, this is just another step forward to make our corridor as beautiful as we can when they do the construction.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Panicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the maximum amount, 130% purchase of rock salt, and the not-to-exceed amount of $52,734.50. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
You have a second. You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So, as we watch flurries come down today, we are planning for our next season worth of winter. So, this is-
You could stop.
We could stop now. Okay.
Yeah.
This is one of our salt purchases for next year. It's with DuPage County. They already went out to bid. Prices came in only 2.3% lower than they did last year. We were expecting a much lower price with the winter that we had this year. But, we have a $500 commitment, a 500-ton commitment, which will allow us to purchase up to 650 tons on that contract at a total cost of $52,734.50. So, it's our recommendation to approve this contract. We'll find out about the state contract probably in September.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz? Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Panicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the execution of a purchase order to Exon Incorporated for the emergency pump replacement, pump one, at the York Road lift station, an amount of $45,053.79. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion, Joe?
So, York Road is our largest of our lift stations. It actually conveys wastewater from every industrial building and the residential's north of the railroad tracks. So, again, a very important lift station in our sanitary sewer system. The lift station has three 60-horsepower pumps. These are very large pumps that pump that water to our wastewater treatment plant every day. Back on March 4th, one of our pumps, pump number one, failed and was sent to a local firm for evaluation. The results of that inspection were that the lower seal had failed. It was leaking water into the, or oil, water into the oil compartments, and also, the impeller was very worn and beyond repair. Cost to repair the 16-year-old pump was almost $34,000. We started looking into the purchase of a new one. A new pump actually is a lot more than $1,000 more. So, the pump is $37,000, and then we also need an $8,000 cost for a new bale, which actually holds the pump in place, and installation. As normal useful life for these pumps is about 15 to 20 years, we feel it's appropriate at this point to go ahead and buy the new pump. We were planning on doing this as part of a larger rehabilitation project in a couple of years. The pump kind of beat us, though. So, we're asking as an emergency purchase to purchase a new pump, a flight pump, which is our new standard, from Xylem. They are a regional distributor, so it is kind of a sole-source purchase. They do go out and are part of the joint purchase program, so we know that their prices have been looked at by a bigger agency. So, SAP does recommend approval on this emergency purchase.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Panicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four, resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids and re-advertising for the 2019 Annual Residential Street Light Project, CDBG. 2019 or 2020?
19.
19, okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So, this is one of our projects that Julie mentioned as a grant-funded project, this community development block grant. It's taken some time for HUD to get to DuPage County their CDBG funds, so that's why it's a 2019 project. We finally got a chance earlier this year to bid this project out. Unfortunately, we only had one bidder submit a bid, although the price was really good. HUD policies and CDBG policies do not allow for the award of a project that only had one bidder. So, they are, as much as we tried to talk the county into the good price going forward, they had it strictly hold by the HUD policies. So, they're making us reject this bid and go back out to bid if we want to do it. So, this is just a formal rejection of that bid. We'll go back out. We'll probably contact a lot more of the utility companies that do this type of work to see if they're interested or why they didn't bid to begin with, and hopefully, get at least more than one bid on the next round.
Any discussion from the board? Please call the roll. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Panicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. We do not have anything on the recreation. Presidential remarks, I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of our Bensonville residents and businesses for your incredible, incredible support and generosity to one another throughout this pandemic. You have truly stepped up to ensure those in need are fed and have what they need to remain safe and healthy. I am extremely proud to be a part of this community and to see the many amazing things that you are all doing to support one another. The village board and I are committed now more than ever to providing much-needed services and support to Bensonville residents and businesses. In a continued effort to provide relief, I have issued several executive orders in the last few weeks to help reduce hardships on our community. Some of these include suspending water shut-offs through May, extending building permits by 90 days, lifting overnight parking restrictions, waiving online fees, and extending the vehicle sticker renewal deadline to the end of the year. In addition, village staff has implemented new programs such as our mini birthday parades for children and a chalk-the-walk contest. I look forward to participating in these programs, and I hope they bring help, I hope they help to bring smiles and positive memories. As we continue to stay at home and practice social distancing, please remember to monitor your physical and mental health. Remember to check in on loved ones, especially those who are at a higher risk. While maintaining your physical health is important, please be mindful that village parks remain closed until further notice. Again, I commend the incredible acts of kindness that has been displayed over the last few weeks. I look forward to seeing them continue as we support one another during this time. Thank you again, and please stay healthy. That's all I have. Village manager's report?
I have no report.
Village attorney's report?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Any unfinished business to come before the board today? Is there any new business to come before the board today? Is there a need for executive session? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Frank?
You have a motion?
Yes.
No, no, no. I was going to say about the census to remind everybody to do the census as long as everybody's home.
Yes, I'll jump in on that.
Nancy Quinn is reminding everybody to do your census since you're all at home. We're very, very low, right? We're low turnout on this. So, come on. We want you to do the census. It's very important, especially at a time like this. We need every vote, everybody to be counted. Thanks, Nancy Quinn. So, do I have a motion to adjourn now?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.